You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is July twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of the African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot XS LaPorte County dot org.
It is July the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Um, welcome to the Michigan City Social Status of African American Males. Can we please all stand for a pledge? Tommy, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary on the roll call, please.
Ken Fly. Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Stacy Benny.
Present.
Lynda Conley here.
I don't think so.
Oh, sorry about that. Pastor Carol.
Present.
Tony Cox.
Present.
Sean Fitzpatrick. Pastor Hurt.
Pass. Present.
My pass, what you? When?
House of Christ has.
Robert Johnson. Mike Jones.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Fay Moore.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine members are present and three are absent.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum. Commissioner Benny, could you please read our mission statement?
The mission of the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males is to study the social conditions of the state's black Ameri- black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities and to make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic, employment and other circumstances for black males in Michigan City.
Thank you. I will accept a motion to accept them amendments from June.
So moved.
Um, excuse me, I have.
I have.
One second, one second. We got a motion. We got a motion. If we have a second, we gonna have go to discussion. We have a second. Yes, um, discussion, Ms. Benny.
Um, there is um, an air or oversight on the um, payout for the BJ Ashley Scholarship to Cornell Branch that's two thousand and should be one thousand.
Commissioner Collie.
I was gonna say that I just noticed that I made a error there and I'm gonna redo the minutes and I'll see you guys to correct it. Minutes that that should be a thousand and not two thousand for the Cornell Branch Scholarship.
Entertainer. Um, with that being said, I stand for correction on the minutes. I make a motion to accept the minutes with the one correction.
Madam Sec- uh, Secretary on the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Walter Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore. Aye. Eyes, Tavik.
Next on the agenda is a treasure report. I will entertain a motion to accept a treasure report.
Motion to accept a treasures report as presented.
Second, discussion from anyone? Any discussion from the treasurer?
No.
On the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. But I just recalled something that the controller advised me of. There is an outstanding donation amount of two hundred and fifty dollars that's going to the Black History Month Committee that was voted on on this commission um, some months ago, presented by uh, Commissioners uh, Lee and Fay Moore. Um, the controller did advise me that she um, has been working on several different things and she will be getting that out. Um, so the balance that we currently have is the current balance, but it will reflect the negative two hundred and fifty dollars here real soon. FYI.
FYI, okay. Said no more discussion. Anyone? Roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Walter Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
All ayes. Eyes have it.
All right, under new business, I would like to um, I will accept a motion that we will add our mission statement to our, all of our agendas and that will eliminate us from the reading of the agenda. So we can move forward with our meeting. So from this moment forward, I will entertain a motion that we will have our mission statement on each agenda.
I so move that. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary on the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Millsap.
Aye.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
I has it.
All right. I was going to bring this up at our next meeting, but Mr. Millsap is um, has brought it to my attention. Um, as you know, we have a vacancy for our chair and that's what has me had me in this position right now. Um, our other chair has resigned. Mr. Ken Fly, Commissioner Fly has um, has stepped down. Um, I would like to hold a vote uh, in um, our September meeting, but Mr. Millsap, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, with that being said, uh, reference to the timing, if there's no one else interested in seeking the position as the chair, then protocol would be the vice moves up, which is yourself. Uh, so is there anyone else interested in being the chair at this time? Uh, I take that as a no. All right, with that being said, then I would make the motion that our vice chair moves up to chair and there's a vacancy for the vice.
I'll second it. With the understanding that pursuant to our bylaw, section six, I that I will fulfill that that seat for the remainder of his unexpired time. So that will be the first of the year. I second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary on the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor, I'm sorry. Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Eyes have it. No move.
Not about that. Go ahead. No, did Mr. Fly resign from the chair or did he resign from the commission as well? What I read in the email, he resigned as the chair.
Okay, that's what I understood.
Okay, I just want to clarify. Commissioner Benny.
Um, in light of that, so now we have a vacancy for vice chair.
Correct, that's what I was gonna get to.
Okay.
So with that being said, we have to entertain a motion to nominate someone.
I nominate Commissioner Willie Millsap.
I second it.
And why you gotta do nothing? Fulfill that title, that's it. It's the five months.
Yeah, but is that with pay or?
You get paid.
Any other leads that we have a quorum?
Okay, thank you.
Nominee?
I accept.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other nominees nominations? Hearing none? Um, we have a motion and we have a second. On the roll call, please.
Mr. McCormick.
Aye.
Mrs. Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Millsap voting for himself.
Aye.
Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Is there any other new business? Hearing none, is there any old business?
Mr. Chair. Status, status report on our Facebook, Miss Moore.
The Facebook page will, we just have to start a new Facebook page and um, Mr. Harmon is supposed to be here today to take a group picture. Hopefully he'll show up before the end of.
Scotty.
Before the end of the uh, session and we will set up our Facebook page.
Any other discussion? That we call Mr. Harmon, make sure he's gonna be here?
We did have a meeting this morning.
Okay.
Um.
Miss.
This is here. Um, I'm not su- well, actually this would go under old business. It's not necessarily under our reports. Um, the status of our field trip to the um, the Savo Museum um, and Educational Center will take place this Saturday. Um, we have approximately five chaper- chaperones and anywhere from twenty to twenty-five children. Um, so this is well overdue. We're looking forward to it. Hopefully the weather will cooperate. And um, just to let you know that that will be taking place finally.
All right, thank you. I think we move on to subcommittee reports and I, now I'll start off with education. Uh, co-chair Hurt, do you have any Commissioner Hurt, do you have anything you would like to say about education? I, I know we're going on the this summer time. I know we're going on a field trip, so that was already elaborated on you, so Ms. Benny, so let's go to um, health. Any reports from health?
Watson, Johnson, Snyder.
Employment?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, please be advised that I would like to make uh, a request to have Monique from the LaPorte County uh, HR office to be at our next month's meeting.
I will accept that request and um, she will be here.
Okay, good.
Make sure she's present.
Okay, I'll reach out to her to confirm that. That would be my employment report.
Thank you. Criminal justice, Commissioner Benny?
Um, no report.
Miss Moore, social factors.
Yes, good afternoon. Um, in the future, could we have a like speaker up earlier so that um, you know, they don't have to sit through all of our?
I was gonna make some more motions to the uh, to eliminate the roundtable and some other things when we do have guest speakers, so we will bring that up. All right.
Okay, but anyway, our guest reader is here, uh, Ms. Rema Bender. Will you come forward? And uh, Ms. Bender is from Friendship Botanical Gardens, International Friendship Botanical Gardens. And uh, she will give us a update and history on our African garden. Um, when Mr. Payne was our chair, um, some time ago, we had um, did an agreement with Friendship Interna- International Gardens to have an African garden at the garden. And the community, we were trying to get the entire community to support this garden. We would just be an instrument to try to get the African garden at International Friendship Garden. And um, from what I've heard, someone has been helping to keep the African garden going and has been established. And uh, Ms. uh, Rema Bender is gonna give us a update on that.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Rema Bender. I'm Vice President of the Board of Directors for Pratchi Botanic Gardens. I've been with the gardens as a volunteer and singer, et cetera, since the fifties. So when I moved to the area, I was invited to come and join. So uh, been on the board for eight years. Uh, you're correct, Mr. Payne contacted me about starting a garden uh, for African Americans. He also invited, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name, a Mr. Babatola Aloba who came and he and I and uh, Arthur toured the gardens to select a possible spot uh, which would enhance the type of flowers and plants that grow in Africa. And as you all know, Africa has many regions. When I visited there for eighteen days, I went to foliage, to desert, back to wetlands. So it's a very diverse uh, area. And so that was part of the problem as to what type of plantings could we plant in the area that was selected for the African American garden? And so um, what happened at that time, a formal proposal needed to be written. And the first one was written by Mr. Payne and the second one was written by Ms. Fay. And I have that in front of me. Um, in terms of what was going to be done, well, a formal proposal also required a plan, a formal plan. And I suggested uh, that Mr. Payne contacted Laura Bolton at Beach, Beachside Gardens and she developed the plan. And um, in that plan, what you're going to see, the various plantings are the original uh, recommendations, some of which, as we go through, did not work out as any plant uh, it has to be plant friendly, soil friendly and climate friendly. And uh, so some of them did not. For instance, the flowering almond is not as large as was predicted it would be, but it does bloom in the early spring in one of the areas of the garden. Uh, the yucca, of course, loves it and we have planted additional ones. So in the history of the gardens, uh, Mr. Payne tried to get someone who would come down and water. And you know, when we have no water, plants don't grow. And he did, he was able to hire um, a lady who came and watered as was, as she could. Uh, obviously that didn't help the gardens flourish. So then fortunately, as I give tours in the garden, there was a lovely lady uh, and she toured the garden with me and she said, you know what? I really like that area. Could I adopt it? Well, she was a white lady from Maine who had moved here to Michigan City to take care of her mother-in-law. And she says, as long as I'm living here, I would love to adopt that garden, which she did. Another lady was touring with me several weeks after that, an African American lady, and we had a most lovely conversation. She said, I would really like to help in that garden. Well, June Laws drove in. Gets seventy-five years old from Gary, Indiana. Every week for three years, either on a Monday or Wednesday, but Misha Henderson and she became dear, dear friends and either they worked together or they divided. One came on Monday, one came on Wednesday. Well, Misha's mother-in-law passed away and that family moved back to their home, so we lost that person. June continued last year, but she called me at the end of the season and she said, you know, Rem, I can no longer do that. My knees will not work. Um, I can't kneel that long and I, the drive has gotten to be too much to me for Gary. So we lost the volunteers. So it laid fallow and if you could continue, um, the African lily is doing well. It's not as large as that is, but it is doing well. Um, the, these fire spinners are supposed to be huge by now, but again, they are surviving and they're doing well. This St. John's Wort is huge. There are three of them there and you'll see in a future picture how large they are. They need uh, trimming, obviously, and trimming has to happen either late fall or early spring to keep control of that particular bush. What we tried to do with Laura is identify plants in various regions of Africa to try to represent the plants that would be indigenous. Of course, there's so much hibernation going on all over the planet that it's very hard to identify specific plants for specific gardens. There is only one specific plant that I've been able to identify for the Lithuanian garden and that's the rue. The Polish have one. We had huge discussions about hostas that were hybridized with Poland. Well, I'm sorry, those hostas did not come originally from Poland. They came from China. So, so that's the problem with hybridization. Uh, go on, please. Uh, this is a beautiful plant. This is an African iris and uh, it is in your garden. It is not quite that large. Again, all of this is due to lack of fertilization and water. Um, go ahead, please. Um, Lucifer. The bayberry is growing and overgrown. It's kind of outside towards the back of the garden to give it some type of um, room-like essence for that garden. Oops, we're going back. Okay, the poker plant too. Now, originally there was one planted. I've had some donations, so I, I believe there are three right now. And they should be flourishing to this extent after now you look at it, twenty to sixteen to twenty twenty-three. They should be huge, but once again, lack of fertilization and lack of water and lack of care, the, the ladies tried desperately to make sure that all happened. But once that stops, plants, as you know, unlike human beings, they need to be pet and water. Go ahead, please. Um, then uh, this May night, Salvia is doing well. Again, it's not as large as you see there, but it's doing very well in that garden. The grasses love it. Uh, we have a volunteer uh, who tries to get at as many gardens as she can. She's been trying to trim these up a little bit because they're overgrown in, in one of the areas. Go ahead, please. Uh, this one, uh, this nepeta uh, did not survive. There is a purple nepeta and a white nepeta. Uh, this particular one did not survive in the gardens. Uh, the sweet Heidi uh, is there. It's again, not quite this large, but it is surviving. Uh, we could use more in that garden. It does have empty spots. Uh, the esculcism and the juniper, they're out to the side. Uh, they are surviving, but again, the juniper is surviving a little bit better than the pine. Uh, the willow did not survive and is gone. And um, obviously in the design of the garden, we all decided that was, it was really inappropriate. It would have grown too large and it would over overshadow a lot of the plants in the garden. So once it failed, we did not replant it. Uh, Laura recommended rocks. I saw quite a few rocks. Well, rocks are expensive. So I toured around the garden and I asked one of the art garden people and our, our maintenance people, could you please get another rock, take it out of Romania and bring it over to Africa? So they did. So we do have a rock in the African garden where we should have. That, there is really no path. That was in the original design. Um, but it really didn't work out. Uh, again, it needed specific care. So we just let grass and plants grow in the, in the design. Uh, there is a, is, is a container that the ladies used to fill, but of course it's not filled this year due to the fact we do not have someone who's consistently taken care of. Again, it's a representation of an area of Africa that does this type of design in clay, uh, which I saw when I was there and it would be nice to have something like that in that garden. Uh, again, she represented in the original those types of containers in some way that they could be used in the garden as decorative elements. Uh, so again, she mentioned a whole list of various special accents that could be used to enhance the garden. Uh, some are there, but what we really wanted, Misha and June, um, and I myself wanted some height in the garden and some symbol representing Africa. And so what happened? If you go to the next one, again, there's the rocks, some additional ones. A bench was requested. Jude Laws donated that. Purchased, purchased that and donated from her personal funds. Um, now, what we do have is that, as I said, we wanted some type of height and some type of sculpture in that garden. Uh, the story is that uh, Misha also wanted that and she started doing some research. And one day she came to the gardens and she said, Rema, you know what? I found a person who could do this for us. I said, well, who is that? And she said, Vida Kluko. Oh, I said, she's my nationality. She's Lithuanian. She has a studio here in Michigan City as a mosaic artist. Okay, so she agreed. And then we said we need a design. So Vida, being in, uh, having two master's degrees in design and so forth uh, from Chicago and is to design in Columbus University, started going through her friendships in Chicago. And she found Carolyn Eileen. Carolyn Eileen is an African American artist living in Oak Park. She uh, her specialty is huge mosaic structures in Chicago. And she tries to invite youth to construct those murals, walls, et cetera, which she designed. She agreed to develop the design for these poles. Each of those designs are from Kenya and each of those poles is called a peace pole. Uh, and then we decided that the tallest one is, represents Kilimanjaro mountain. The next one, Kenya, and the third one, Stanley. And all of them are authentic designs that she drew, uh, Carolyn Eileen. And then Vida donated all her time to create those poles, build them and put them out mosaics. They also traveled down to Kokomo, Indiana to buy the glass. And if you know Kokomo and the glass factory that's there, it's been there for a long, long time. And Mr. Tiffany used to send his workers down there to pick glass for his Tiffany Lanson and Tiffany Windows. So it's longstanding. And so then the construction began and, go ahead, please. And they stand at the farthest point. So when someone comes to visit, they can see them standing high in the back of the garden, but yet they kind of envelop the garden as a whole. So they are, as I said, uh, symbols and um, they're descriptors. There is a sign next to them that I wrote to inform and that's what, one of the, the three designs. Uh, and then Misha was kind enough to develop a, a card, a thank you card. She had that made and of course, we don't have that card. Uh, it's her design and she took them back with her, but that's a, that would be an idea. So there you go. If you're on the path, walking by the garden, you see those two, three tall or bushy uh, bushes and that's your say, not Jane John's Wort and in the back are the three poles that you see. So from, from the pathway, when people come down, your garden is the first garden on the right that you see. Anybody sees as they came down the path. It's the very first one. And then on the left, uh, there would be an Irish garden that's in construction. And then later on, the um, labyrinth, et cetera, and then the various other gardens. And these gardens are in the side of our garden that is called the Heritage Side, which is the way it was called when the brothers first established that garden in nineteen thirty-six. And it was the International Friendship Gardens from a donation that Dr. Warren gave them for a hundred years. It was the lease of a hundred years for one dollar. And so they, they designed it. Uh, there is an uh, Netherlands garden where Queen Wilhelmina donated two hundred thousand tulips. And they were planted at that time. Of course, that's gone. The deer loved that. And so many years ago, that was gone. The deer loved that. And so many years ago, that was gone. Uh, there's an Italian garden donated by Mussolini. Uh, there's a, uh, several big bells that we have. One is cast in England in the same, uh, air casting forgery where the peace bell was done that traveled all around Europe and the United States. And at that time, one of the organizations donated, um, peace bell to the gardens. It hangs, it has its own. But guess what? I bet you'll never guess who donated that bell. The Premier of Germany. And who was he in the thirties and going into the forties? Adolf Hitler donated the peace bell. That's pretty disynchronous, if you will. So we do have a number of bells and we have a lot of other remnants, uh, left from the thirties and forties. And my goal has been to reestablish them as I look to historical photographs into those areas of the garden where they were originally and if we can restore them. But most of all, the concern is, uh, the African-American garden does not have, as they noticed, uh, one of the official signages that explains about the country has a map where the country lies. And it is on a standard poll, which all of the established gardens have. And the rule is that until a garden is established and maintained, we do not supply the sign. Now, the Lithuanians paid for their sign. The Polish paid for their sign. The Norwegian Association paid for their sign. Others who did not have an established organization, then the gardens paid for the sign. I wrote most of those signs and the history of all that, uh, so that people could really understand. Um, thanks to Jude Laws, who had a neighbor who's in, an artist in Gary. He made a little sign that says African-American garden. It's sitting there so people at least can identify what it is. Because when she came to visit, she said, you told me there's an African-American garden, but I can't find it. And I said, well, Fay, I'm sorry, June, when you come down your path, the first garden on your right is the African-American. Well, she said, doesn't say so. I'm gonna do something about it. Well, she had her neighbor make that sign. So it still does not have an official sign. So hopefully your commission can come up with some dollars and put up an official sign, which will be written. It will match. There'll be a map on it. If you come to the gardens, you'll see that each of those signs has the continent, where the country is, about the history, what foliage grows there, what are the economic products from that country? So that every visitor, because my feeling is our kids here, and I've been, I'm a former teacher, both university and elementary and middle school. Our kids do not know history, nor do they know geography. They have no clue. That's why I wanted each of those signs to have a map so they have a relationship. Where is this country? Because they stand there and look and they never heard the name. They don't know where it is. Where in the world? Oh, it's, was it one of the states? I'd say, okay, which state do you think it would be? Can you name them? No. So it's important that we have information for all of our public and all of the gardens that we have. So thank you, Fay, for inviting me and we hope that I can work together with you.
Yeah, questions?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. You said something about a map, name and country. Well, yeah. Sixty-three or sixty-two countries in Africa. So.
We're gonna have to have the continent.
You went from Ghana to Kenya here. Well, this one was like, you know, seven hour flight.
It was one of them that to go to Africa, I'll tell you that, to Kenya.
From Ghana to Kenya, seven hours. From Ghana to Kenya, seven hours.
Yes, yes. So yes, it would be a continent and we would identify. And obviously, anything that's written, we always have it edited by the people of that country to make sure that we have everything correct. Or if there's anything that's missing, that it can go in before the plant, uh, uh, placard goes in for manufacturer.
I was fortunate enough to spend twelve years of my life in Africa. And, uh, never told a garden.
Commissioner Millsap?
Yes, uh, first of all, thank you for that presentation. It was very educational. And, uh, you mentioned in your presentation that, uh, signage. Is it possible that we can have our commission signage put at that location?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, we can talk about that with whoever your representatives are. And, um, I'll show you the types of signs that we use. They're all the same in terms of size and designation. And once the dialogue is written, uh, then that goes to a company. And of course, that would be reviewed by your commission to be sure that everything is correct.
Okay, thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones? Nothing?
Your lights on.
Yeah.
Ms. Moore?
I have a question. What is the cost for the signage? Pardon me? The cost for the signage?
The sign is probably seven hundred dollars now. Uh, I can't tell you directly. I know that when we first started, you know, inflation, uh, we use a sample of the Michigan City signs that you see around. I contacted Vacker, which is a company that manufactures those in Michigan City. So we use the same company. And at that time, I think Michigan City paid five hundred per sign. But now I know the most recent one, the rotary sign costs seven hundred. Now, again, who knows? It seems every single day when I check prices, something changes. Uh, and whether that's a sign, but obviously we need the pole, we need the installation. Our staff would do that part.
Commissioner Mills?
Any other questions?
With that being said, is if we use our social status commission sign, there's no need for any additional sign, correct?
Well, this would be a historical sign to match all the others. Now, if you wanted a, an additional sign, we'd have to take a look at that together and see where it would go and what it would say. So it would complement what we have in the gardens and complement your official sign as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said you need volunteers. Are you willing to teach people? I don't know how to water. I, I know how to put water on a flower. Sometimes I think you're gonna overwater it. So can you explain to us how many days of the week or every day that the watering process has to take place?
Well, we're happy. I have a, thank goodness, I have a very nice crew of volunteers. Usually they come on Mondays and work because they, that's a good day for them. In terms of watering, of course, it's so dependent on the weather. When we've had the dry spell, we've had every other day it's water. Because again, you know, where your garden is, um, one part of that garden is fairly moist. The soil is fairly moist. When you get closer to the pathway, that's drier. So obviously, we water more at that side than the back side. Uh, so it's usually in the dry spell, it's every other day. But, uh, when we've had like this time, this weekend, my own garden, I haven't watered now for a good week, other than any plants that are in a container. Uh, those we need water almost daily. And in terms of your garden, there really is not a container that has plants in it. Yes.
Uh, reference to the water supply, is there one nearby?
Yes, yes, we do have a hose and I've, this year I purchased some new ones that were later to pull because we had some thirty-year-old hoses that were pretty difficult to pull around.
So someone could just go there?
Yeah, absolutely. The waters turn on, you just use the hose, water, put it back in that location and you're set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
It'd be great to have some of your young people trained and come down as volunteers. It would be terrific.
I think that we should, uh, learn how to do it first. Then we can teach our young people how to do it and, and move along with that.
Okay, terrific. The other thought, um, I talked to, um, several people and we wanted to do a Juneteenth celebration. And that discussion was about two years ago. It never went anywhere because I didn't have volunteers to organize it. But I know you have a dance group, uh, or a parish who would be involved. It would be a wonderful thing to have a Juneteenth celebration next year in the gardens and in your African-American garden. And really inform the neighbors and our public in Michigan City that there is such a thing. And it is, uh, something that they're welcome to come, become members, join us in celebrating, uh, Africa and the other countries as well that are represented. So if you and your discussions think about that, I think I would love to work with someone to have that happen. I think it, um, my plan had been to invite the artists from Evanston, if she had time, to dedicate it. I know Vida, before she moved to Florida, she said, I really would like this to have a dedication of a minister from the African-American uh, community that we could really make it a special event. So it'd be a wonderful way to focus you and to focus the garden.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Social factors, we can write that down. We can talk about that at our next, uh, meeting.
I'm sorry, it took longer than usual.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you. And I'll write it all. Now open it up to public comments.
Hi, Tommy Colobby, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm looking forward to going to our field trip to the De Salle Museum. I'm gonna be tagging along, paying my own way, help everybody get there and back, make sure everything's gonna be okay. Uh, I want to recognize, I know a lot of you've been around here in Michigan City a long time. Mine was actually gonna mark the fifty-year anniversary. We're on the eve of the, the inferno that destroyed the Pullman Standard Rail Car Shops. That happened on, um, July thirteenth, nineteen seventy-three. I think everybody might know the history of that. The car shops had closed down, Whiskies had bought and they were converting it over to, um, to warehousing. And, um, they, they had the contractors and they're doing some work and they left a bolt smoldering up in the rafters and they all went home and that's what started the fire. And, you know, it was, it was really devastating. We all remember that. We were around back then. Of course, that's the Cypress Lighthouse Mall, it's been burned down. They sold the property, the Delverby Belt Lighthouse Mall. I also want to reckon, uh, thank Roddy McCormick. We had an issue with the Michigan City Fire Department. The union wanted to shade lower the, the, the final determination to, for city residency to, or sort of stands at fifteen percent. And that's due to consent judgment that was made in nineteen seventy-eight. But we're gonna keep that at fifteen percent. So, you know, we're, we're doing some, some wordness changes. That's why they wanted to change. We're gonna keep that the same. We're just gonna change some of the other percentages for the determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Is there any other public comment? Um, we got through this pretty fast. Um, I have nothing to add to this, uh, meeting. Is there anybody that wanna have, have, uh, need to say something today? Mr. Millsap?
Yes, I would like to thank, uh, our, uh, prior chair, Mr. K, uh, Fly, for putting in the long hours and doing the job of our chair. Uh, I appreciate it. I'm sure my fellow commissioners appreciate it also. So whatever his future holds, I'm behind him a hundred percent.
Anyone else? Ms. Moore?
I'd just like to, uh, announce that, uh, the Back to School Rally is coming up July twenty-ninth. July is already here. Can't believe it. And, uh, it's gonna be at Gilfield as usual. And I, I'm helping, I get the volunteers. I still need somewhat help.
And I'd just like to add one thing to all of this. Um, we gotta put forth a better effort at taking care of stuff that we start. So in August, it'd be my recommendation to this board that we go to Friendship Garden, see the garden that was started by Mr. Payne. All of us. Um, is, when we, if we meet in a quorum, I'm pretty sure we will all be paid for that day. Um, and we don't have to make it long and drawn out, but I think it's important that we support what we started. And that'd be my recommendation and we can talk about it later. But by the end of August, I think we should be out there. Thank you.
I have something.
Ms. Colley?
Um, I don't know if you all are aware or not, but Chairman Fly had a fire that, that destroyed his home. And he has also some health issues going on, so we can keep him in our prayers. And, um, I'm sure that he would welcome any type of donations, prayers, donations you can get to him. Thank you.
Motion for a adjournment? Motion for adjournment?
Yes.
All in favor? Neatness adjourn. Thank you.